I'll call the June 10, 2008 study session to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rosansky is absent.
Okay. City manager has informed me that there's some people here that would like to make a couple of public comments prior to getting started. So with the council's indulgence, I'll allow that. So open for public comments at this time.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. Greg Schwank, I am the CEO and Executive Director of the Newport Beach Film Festival. And I know it's that exciting time of year when we review the budgets. And just wanted to give my thanks and the thanks of the Board of Directors and the over 42,000 people that participated in this year's festival for the support of the Newport Beach City Council. I'm proud to say that even in the challenging economic times, we were able to see a slight growth in both attendance and in ticket sales with exponential growth in the outreach of this year's festival. We were able to commission our every other year study by UCI. And the numbers from that will be coming to our office and then out to council probably in the next month. But all numbers look very good, both as far as the number of people coming out to the festival, but also people coming to Newport, staying in Newport Beach and going to multiple events and other activities throughout the city. So I just wanted to let you all know how much we thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them at this time.
Any questions, Greg? Mike?
So how much was attendance up this year?
Very slightly. Last year, we had 41,000 approximately. We had about 42,000 this year. But what we saw is more and more of our attendees as opposed to coming to one event, we're going to multiple. And one of the unscientific things we were looking at is people that were traveling last year may have driven down from Los Angeles, stayed for the event and gone back to their homes. More and more people we were finding were driving down, staying and going to making a day or a weekend of it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Greg, I would just commend you for a great festival, particularly the special events with Roy Disney and with Richard Sherman. I thought were just particularly well done. I heard great comments about them. I was at both of them. And I know the community truly appreciates what you do every year. And the enthusiasm and the energy was really very high this year.
Well, thank you. You know, we're definitely going to build on the success of those events and our relationship with the Disney family and the company. Next year is our 10th anniversary. Very hard for many of us to believe, but our 10th anniversary. And we're really going to be doing some great things. So again, I want to thank you all.
Sorry, my vacation schedule keeps getting messed up. And I've missed it the last two years. Can we adjust the date a little bit?
We actually are looking at some of that. A lot will depend on the availability of theaters. But we may be pushing it into May for year 10, just to accommodate Councilman Webb's vacation schedule.
That's very considerate of you.
We tried.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you guys very much.
Any other public comments at this time? Okay, I'll close public comments and go back to our normal agenda here. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Gardner? Councilman Curry? Councilman Webb?
Yes, I plan to pull the item on the Restaurant Association, VID, because I think we need to discuss a little bit the budget that they have there. And I don't have really a question right now that I can ask that would get answered without going into some discussions. So I plan to pull that item.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just comment to that, I think there's going to be somebody here from the Restaurant Association a little later on when we have the budget public hearing. So just to let you know that, I'm not sure that they're going to be here that early to where they would be able to answer an item on the budget.
As far as the consent calendar is concerned?
Nope.
I don't think we should be approving a document that shows a budget that is somewhat different from what we have in our budget. So I would question, maybe we postpone that item and hear after the budget item or something of that effect.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, just one question on the item number 24 on the GAN limit calculation. Dennis, do you have any feeling at all for the amount of exclusion items that you've just not bothered to calculate in past years?
I was thinking about, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I was thinking about that very item this morning. And it's any applicable debt service, which we don't have a lot of, as you know, and plus certain capital improvements as approved by the legislature. And so I would guess that the exclusions are probably in the $3 to $4 million range.
Mayor Perkin-Dagel?
Yes. Number 20, committee appointments. At the time that we roll up the consent calendar, we need to correct the harbor commissioner post from Brad Avery, no, from Bill Avery to Brad Avery. And then on number 18, the youth center on Corona del Mar. Appreciate the schedule. Is there a needs assessment that goes along with that?
I did send that to you early this afternoon. You probably didn't have time to look at it. But I did send it to you on the computer.
Okay, thank you. Because it seemed as if we went pretty quickly from needs assessment to the drawings. And I don't know, maybe in the future at a minimum, we'd want to sort of take a look at the needs assessment. What your thoughts would be on that? Because I think it's now a little more than a million dollar project.
Yeah. And looking at the needs assessment, I mean, it was basically a farm, from what I saw. And they went through and talked about what the needs were and what staff said needed to be done. So it was not the kind of needs assessment that we did like for Oasis. But one thing that we need to keep in mind is that that facility will be used during the Oasis rebuild. So we are going to move a number of Oasis activities over there and use that as basically a temporary home for Oasis. But so I don't think it was a big needs facilities. It was mainly what are we going to need in order to make this work for Oasis? And also to solve some of the problems that we've been dealing with for the last few years.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I had a question beforehand on 1415, retaining some consultants for the ham and the watershed. And I understand in the not so distant future, we're going to have a study session on the ham, you know, ensure that the council understands the conceptual framework that we're dealing with here. And then if there's any appropriate policy direction that needs to be given at this stage. And then my final question was on number 19, that's the signal synchronization project. Is there going to be any inconveniences at all to the public in terms of lane closures or anything like that?
Mayor and council, my guess would be they'd be relatively minor, since most of the work that is involved is really just changing out existing equipment. There might be situations where we have to fix loops and things like that. But for the most part, a lot of the work will be happening kind of off the edge of the pavement. But there could be some minor closures. And as always, we'll notify the public in advance of any of those.
Okay, that'd be good. The public's definitely entitled to know. And then are you planning to change out any traffic control boxes with that new equipment?
Yeah, all of the rehab work that's being done will include, it'll be compatible with the new system. So while a lot of the bulk of the rehab projects are really rewiring, re-conduit work, there are, you know, there aren't going to be controllers changed out as well. So they'll all be compatible and ready to go.
Okay, so the big control boxes, will we be moving any of those potentially?
Well, we might be changing out cabinets, but probably not changing out locations.
Okay. I asked because there is some boxes that are really very obtrusive. For example, there is one right in front of the Lexus Fountain or the Fountain at Lexus. And they generate a lot of sales tax for us. And it's pretty unsightly. And then you get on at the new resort, you know, same thing. You've got a big box that's, you know, really kind of right there. So I don't know what our flexibility is, what those cable runs are like. But as we're changing them out, if we could maybe look at some of those locations and cite them in a less obtrusive way.
We did look at the Lexus location before. And I think it proved to be quite costly because the Lexus people were willing to maybe split that cost until we got the cost estimate. And then they backed away. And it was more expensive than we thought it would be.
Yeah. And that's a signal that we share with City of Irvine, which had extensive fiber optic connections, which would have been fairly expensive to move across the street. So because I believe it was somewhere a little over $100,000 to move the whole system. So we thought that, you know, we worked with Lexus. And we ended up painting the box to a different color, which seemed to satisfy their concerns. So we continue to look at that. And certainly, we'll look at other locations. If there are better locations for boxes, we'll certainly look into that.
Councilman Webb?
I think one of the things you sometimes forget about is that those boxes are positioned also so that the guy that's working on the repairs has the ability to look at some of the signal heads. And if you take and hide the boxes in locations to where they can't see the signals, then it takes maybe two or three people to do the maintenance work as opposed to one. And this has been a complaint that we've had, I think, since time began because they are the brains of the system. And they take a lot of room. And they can't be hidden.
Okay. All right. I have nothing. Next item on the agenda is the continuation of the department budget overview. Mr. Gliddon?
Mr. Mayor, last time we left off with the police chief. He had reviewed the police department. But I'd like to call Chief Klein back because he has something that he wants to share with the city council regarding an operational issue that will not take long. And then we'll move forward with the review of the fire department's budget.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. In the last year and a half, been looking at the different ways to address some of the concerns from the community about our visibility in the neighborhoods, our visibility in all areas of the city. We've got a couple of things. We've opened up communication with the residents. We've increased our presence in certain neighborhoods. And we have more police officers there. But I want to give you some notice of something that we're going to do now. I think that's going to increase our visibility even a little bit more. Let me get the lights. We're going to be moving our police cars to a black and white version. I think this is going to help with clearly being more visible in the neighborhoods, not only to the residents, but also to the visitors that come in Orange County, 25 municipal police departments or police agencies. All but two of them at this point have black and white cars. This is our current graphics in the blue with the black and white trunk and hood. This is currently what we have right now. It's the same graphics. We redesigned these graphics about two years ago to give a more professional look and be more visible. So those graphics on those doors will stay the same. We'll just have to go out and get the front and rear of the car painted black. And this is what the police car looked like for most of the 25 years that I was here prior to the last version. Very plain. Really, I don't think the professional limits that we were looking for. Often, particularly down the oceanfront lot, you get flagged down pretty regularly for taxi rides. Some people got rides, some people didn't. But really, whether it's in the oceanfront lot or in the neighborhoods, it really doesn't jump out as a police car. And I think the black and white will give us that increased visibility. And black and whites really aren't anything new. The city back in the '60s, we had black and whites. We, along with many other police departments, converted to the whites. I'm not sure why we specifically did. But in the '60s, there was a move to go to the black and whites. One of it was availability and time delay in getting the black and whites. The other issue was trying to get a softer look with some of the civil rights protests and anti-war protests that were occurring. But I think going back to the black and whites is more traditional look. It's what most of the people in Southern California are used to seeing. As I said, we're one of three departments right now that have the all-white car. And I think the black and whites give us a more professional look and clearly, I think, are much easier to identify in the city. And that is an example of what it looks like. I'd expect that we'll start seeing the first black and white cars on the streets sometime after the Fourth of July, first week or two of the Fourth of July.
Are we going to just go out and do a mass contract and do all of them at once? Or are we just going to phase them in as new vehicles become available?
We are going to go out and paint them en masse. It's probably going to take about a month to paint. We've got four different bids ranging from $1,600 per car down to $500. We selected a company that will do some minor bodywork and the painting for $500 per car looks like is going to cost us about just under $19,000 to do the conversion. I'm concerned by about not doing it all at once is that, you know, we're going to have different looks out there. But the other reality is that if the car's not painted black and white, it won't get driven. And then we'll have cars that are not racking up the mileage. And then those cars will sit around longer and longer. And then as we get new cars, starting with the order for next year, we will get the black and whites factory ordered. So there's just a long time cost.
Chief, who are the other two jurisdictions that don't have black and whites?
Irvine and Laguna Beach.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I thought this was a good thing to bring back because I think there was a little discussion and a question from Councilman Hen last time about visibility in the neighborhoods. This doesn't solve that problem, but I think it might enhance the perception of the cars driving through the neighborhood. Okay, Chief Lewis?
Mayor, council, I can reassure that we're going to stay with red for fire engines. So I came from a department that for a number of years, we did have yellow. And I was glad we went to red. So it was nice coming here. I'll move quickly through mine. It's pretty straightforward. Make sure I got this. I always put the mission statement up here. Just to let you know, that's our litmus test when things come before me. Always make sure that every project, everything we work on meets the goals of what we're setting for. I'm not going to read it to you. But because there are times, from time to time, something will come up. And I'll say it doesn't really meet our missions. And we won't, we're not going to proceed forth with it. Department summary, as you can see, is all departments. We're broken down into our salaries, maintenance operations, and our capital outlay. This year's budget for '09, we're proposing is $31,515. All of our increases are, as I went through all the accounts and looked at all of them, are pretty much in line from what I see. There's just a normal year-to-year cost that things increase. The capital outlay actually went down because last year, we had a lot of EMS supplies that we needed to get, our 12 LEED EKGs, a lot of our grant monies in here. And we aggressively go after all of the grants. So in our capital outlay, you see all that. So last year, we went out, we got a lot of emergency medical service equipment that we were needing to replace. So that's why this year, '09 is a little less, 27% down. And I would say on grants, we do a pretty good job of being out there aggressively trying to find what we can. And we've been pretty successful, not just since I've been here, but even before I was with Tim, in getting those grants. They're out there. But you, it is, grants are a funny thing. You have to build relationships. A lot of it is making those networking things because it can go either way on some of them. And I'll say in the county, the people who are the adjudicators of the grants are actually pretty fair, unlike where I came from across the other county. It wasn't always fair. Everybody's pretty fair here in making sure to distribute through the fire departments. But it doesn't hurt to make sure that you are always there. So on grants, we do pretty good. And we continue to do that. Detail, you can see we have six divisions. Our training division is actually have subdivision on that. And it's, between fire ops and lifeguard ops is obviously the majority of where our money goes. In training, we have our junior lifeguard, our lifeguard training, fire training. We have community preparedness. I have my community education and citizen, or excuse me, city emergency services under training. We have a total of 157 full-time people with 32 full-time equivalents. So that's what, 189. And then during the summer, our employment roles go up to 130 with our seasonal lifeguard. So starting next week, we're going to have probably 130 more available people to put on the beach. A lot of people said, how come a lot of the lifeguard towers are not filled? Starting in the next couple of weeks, they will be. And they will be, there'll be a lifeguard at every tower all through Labor Day. After that, then we pull back to make sure, depending on the weather, weather's the big factor, then we narrow that down to what towers we need to make available. But so there's a lot of people. And the staff does a good job managing all of them. Revenue generation, paramedic program is $2 million. Our junior lifeguard fees, $928,000. Those, all the expenditures there are from the revenues that bring in. Everything that comes in goes out. The participants in that program pay for the entire thing. Public Safety Augmentation Fund, you heard Chief Klein talk about that, $900,000. There was rumors that the state was trying to get their fingers on that. So we'll see how that goes. And that was from Prop 172. Obviously, it was enacted, I think, back in '92. And the fiber prevention fees and fines, $548,000. Those are all of our revenues. Department challenges. Okay, I'll go to my notes. Can you see them? Push forward. There we go. Okay, got it. Development of professional expertise of young and inexperienced personnel. That will continue to go through my tenure here, I can tell you that, because probably 70% of our department has less than 10 years. And I like energetic young individuals, but we lose that experience. And so that will always be a challenge. And my staff is always working for ways to mentor them and bring them along. Response coverage down coast, just response coverage across the city. I'm always looking at making sure that we give patient care to everybody in the city the same as everyone else. And so when we talk about response times, I'm always looking at to make sure that we're fair and equitable across the city. And facility infrastructure, obviously, like everybody, we're looking to replace buildings that need to be replaced. I know, starting in 2012, there will be the funds that start replacing some of those. For us in the interim, a lot of what we do is to make sure that we have gender accommodations. I see us probably in the next decades to come, there will be more females working for our department. And so right now, a lot of what we do is stopgap measures. And they're good. But we need to incorporate those into new buildings, obviously, to accommodate gender accommodations for our females in the facilities. Department successes, I would tell you, thank you for, again, approving the Station 7 and our training tower. It is being utilized every day. And it goes back to that mentoring that we talk about with our young inexperienced personnel, is that we're able to go there out there quite often. Everything that we do in the fire service is train, train, train. There are certain skills that we may not use very often. So we're able to go out there and go over them and over them again. And like one of my chief officers said, it was probably one of the greatest things he's seen in his 30 years career that we were able to have our own facility. A lot of times behind the scenes.
Chief?
Yes.
Are we, are other departments using it? I remember that was something that was discussed.
We're using it right now just on a multi-company drills. There's nobody coming in right now and using it. I've had a couple of cities approach me. And again, we would look at that, obviously, there would be costs incurred for them to do that. But right now, it is so busy with our own personnel using it, it's pretty tough to work them in there. But we do incorporate them in multi-company drills, for instance, Costa Mesa, Orange County Fire Authority, because we actually do go on runs now with them all the time. And so it's nice to come into that facility in a controlled situation and work with them. So, but not just coming in and using it on their own, not as of right now. Behind the scenes, our urban search and rescue capability, that's through Office of Emergency Services in the state of California. We're getting resources to incorporate all of our rescue systems in that. And that's kind of a real morale booster for all of our personnel as we move forward. Again, and for the citizens, it's a good, great capability to have for any disaster that takes place. Again, expansion of the CERT training, it's kind of just proliferating through all the homeowners associations. And we're trying to keep up with all the demands and the requests that are coming in. And we're doing a good job. But I'm very impressed with what we have going on. And really, the citizens that are out there that are really participating, it really is community-based. And when I go out to a drill that has 100, 150 people on a Saturday that are practicing all these skills, it's quite impressive. And they're excited about that. And again, we're going to need them when something big happens. And again, transition of leadership, I can tell you that even though we have a young department, I'm very impressed with the personnel that are behind me, that are coming forward, and going to be in the, really running this department for the next 10, 15 years. It's going to be in capable hands. And so it's just a matter of giving them time to get to where they need to be so that they can take over the reins when I leave and those right behind me that are close to my age are going to be leaving too. So we are, in our captain's level and battalion chief's level, we have some great people that are coming along. So that's been a real success for me. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Kent?
Do you have a question? Yes. I agree. Your overall budget looks like it's well under control, Chief. There's an anomaly in there, though, that I didn't understand. And if you're not able to address it, standing right here at the podium, I'd like a follow-up memo on it. But the fire EMS department here has salaries going from 115 to 359. And then there's an item called personnel transfers that's also up a lot. But in any event, the overall EMS budget is up almost a half a million dollars. And it seems to be related a lot to an increase in salary and benefits. But the rest of your budget seems to be well in line. So I don't understand that. And if somebody has an explanation, they can provide me. I'd appreciate it.
I think my administrative manager probably could answer that.
The main increases, we added more paramedics last year. If you remember, you approved that budget item. So that increased part of it. The personnel transfer item is, the way we budget for it is we take a number of the costs that exist in the fire suppression budget and transfer them into the EMS budget. And because they have a mixed job, they put out fires and they also do EMS things. And so that's, that's the purpose for that line, is to kind of equalize the services that are provided. The, other than the item that we increased the number of paramedics, I'd have to go back and look and see if there was anything else that drove it. But that's off the top of my head what I can think of.
If you can take a look at those two line items and give me a follow-up on that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Curry?
Chief, when Chief
we do incorporate them in multi-company drills, for instance, Costa Mesa, Orange County Fire, Fire Authority, because we actually do go on runs now with them all the time. And so it's nice to come into that facility in a controlled situation and work with them. So, but not just coming in and using it on their own, not as of right now. Behind the scenes, our urban search and rescue capability, that's through Office of Emergency Services in the state of California. We're getting resources to incorporate our, all of our rescue systems and that, and it's kind of a real morale booster for all of our personnel as we move forward. Again, and for the citizens, it's a good, great capability to have for any disaster that takes place. Again, expansion of the CERT training, it's kind of just proliferating through all the homeowners associations, and we're trying to keep up with all the demands and the requests that are coming in, and we're doing a good job. But I'm very impressed with what we have going on, and really, the citizens that are out there, that are really participating. It really is community-based. And when I go out to a drill that has 100, 150 people on a Saturday that are practicing all these skills, it's quite impressive, and they're excited about that. And again, we're going to need them when something big happens. And again, transition of leadership. I can tell you that even though we have a young department, I'm very impressed with the personnel that are behind me, that are coming forward and going to be in the, really running this department for the next 10, 15 years. It's going to be in capable hands. And so it's just a matter of giving them time to get to where they need to be so where they can take over the reins when I leave and those right behind me that are close to my age are going to be leaving too. So we are, in our captain's level and battalion chief's level, we have some great people that are coming along. So that's been a real success for me. So, that's all I have. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Kent? Do you have a question?
Yes. I agree, your overall budget looks like it's well under control, Chief. There's an anomaly in there, though, that I didn't understand, and if you're not able to address it, standing right here at the podium, I'd like a follow-up memo on it. But the fire EMS department here has salaries going from 115 to 359, and then there's an item called personnel transfers that's also up a lot. But in any event, the overall EMS budget is up almost a half a million dollars. And it's, and it seems to be related a lot to an increase in salary and benefits, but the rest of your budget seems to be well in line, so I don't understand that. And if somebody has an explanation, they can provide me. I'd appreciate it.
I think my administrative manager probably could answer that.
The, the main increases, we added more paramedics last year. If you remember, you approved that budget item, so that, that increased part of it. The personnel transfer item is, the way we budget for it is we take a number of the costs that exist in the fire suppression budget and transfer them into the EMS budget. And because they have a mixed job, they put out fires and they also do EMS things. And so that's, that's the purpose for that line, is to kind of equalize the services that are provided. The, other than the item that we increased the number of paramedics, I'd have to go back and look and see if there was anything else that drove it. But that's off the top of my head what I can think of.
If you can take a look at those two line items and give me a follow-up on that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Curry?
Chief, when, when Chief Riley was here in 2006, we talked about the issue of response times at Crystal Cove. And at that time, we looked at the numbers, and we had about a response once every 32 days or so, and a fire about four times a year. He suggested that we were maybe five years away from really needing to have a presence in the, in the Crystal Cove area. Are we still on that schedule, a little longer, a little faster, maybe, one way or the other?
I think we're starting to get, you're seeing that area starting to be built out. And I know when I changed range with Tim, he was talking about when his previous four, five years, there really wasn't anything built out down there. So I know that Orange County Fire Authority suggested there might be something, but there was really nothing built out there. So, but we're getting to be, we're pretty built out there, and we've done some response trial runs in that area, and the times concern me. Back, if we're coming from Station 8, you'd think that they could come down there, they're close. But if you look at the times, and you're trying, and I use as the, the timeline is five minutes, I think we're, we're starting to exceed that. And I think we have, I have some concerns down there with the response times.
Okay. Any other questions with the chief? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Next is the planning department review.
I spoke to Homer a few weeks ago about my ideas for the, the next round of effort to improve our plan check and permit issuance processes. And he asked that I make a presentation to you as part of the, the budget study session. And there are a couple of implications for next year's budget in here. First, well, let me say that I view this as a draft at this point. I think that one of the things that we have not done so far is involve the development review community in, in what we can do to work better, better together. And so I would like to take this plan to them and get their input and finalize it, but still to go ahead and let you know what my current thinking is. Just to review, we've had two staff efforts over the past several years to improve this process. And the first one was in 2000, and, and that was when the biggest changes were made. At that time, we had been doing sequential review, so a plan would come in to the building department, and they would do their review, and then the planning department would do their review, and then public works would do their review, and then fire would do their review. And at that time, we were averaging for residential projects, 12 weeks for the first round of review, and 16 weeks for commercial projects. And what the staff did at that time was decide to do a switch to concurrent review and set the goal of getting the first review completed within four weeks of time. And that meant that all the departments were looking at the plans at the same time. We were then managing a lot more paper because there were so many more sets of plans coming in, and it introduced some coordination issues between departments. But still, overall, I think that it was a good improvement to make. It's one that we want to continue with. And especially as we've increased the level of staffing in the planning department, we have been doing better and better at meeting that four-week turnaround. Just this past year, as follow-up to the study that was done for us by Hoagland Associates, we formulated a couple more staff task forces to take another look at this. And we were able to make some smaller changes and help out a little bit. We added some additional tracks in the plan check process, introduced appointment plan checks so that people can, can make an appointment of time, and they can see all the departments they need to see on a simple enough project. And if the plans are approvable, have them approved the same day. We have quick checks for projects that are of a more simple nature. We have done a great deal to improve the resources that are available online, and we've done some other minor tweaks for paper shuffling and things like that. And after spending a lot of time on that process with the staff task forces and with the department directors and, and the three and four departments involved in this, I think that we have squeezed about as much as we can out of changes to the process. I think that our staff's work ethic is very good. I think their technical skills are very good, and that was borne out in the developer survey that we had recently. And I've had a chance recently to, to talk to people in other cities. When I was at the APA conference recently, I visited another city and heard as many presentations on this as I could. And I think the real thing that we missed in all of our efforts so far, as I said, is involving the development community and being more customer-focused. I think we've looked inward to ourselves and thought, "What can we do to improve?", but we haven't gotten the input from the people we're serving as to what they think we should do to improve. And so that was kind of the, the focus of the thinking on this. And therefore, the first thing that I think that we should do is confer with representatives of the development community and review the targets and the submittal requirements and all the things that we've established at staff level, and make sure that they think they're reasonable, they understand them, and that we all have buy-in into that. I also want to use this as an opportunity to follow up on the developer survey that was done recently and explore some of the comments we got from, from those responses a little bit more fully, and make sure that we understand their concerns and their needs, and that they understand the constraints under which we work as well. I was hoping to present this at your last hearing, so I'm showing a timeframe starting in May, but we will get started on that this month. And I think that for the first few months, we would want to meet biweekly if schedules allow, and then later on, they would, would go to monthly or perhaps even quarterly as, as things smooth out. And I think that the only cost item in this would be the staff time to meet with them.
How does a developer know that this is going on and be able to participate if they want to?
Well, I'm going to start with the list of people who responded to the developer survey and said, "Yes, it's okay to contact me again." I also have some others who have been communicating with me on some specific issues. And we also have an expanding list that we've been creating through the eSelect Alert system, people who have asked to be notified of things. And it, you know, it's not going to be by invitation only, so the more people who find out about it and wish to participate, the better. The next thing that I'm proposing we do is provide some training to our staff who were involved in plan review and permit issuance to help improve their interactions with customers. And I see that we could have a contract with a trainer by early July. I'm talking now to three different trainers, and I'm really trying to get them to customize a program for our own needs and not to, to just give me something off the shelf so we can be efficient with, with our staff time, with our resources, and get something that will really help us. I had initially thought about doing, having it completed by the end of August, but I'm thinking about that more now and concerned about summertime vacation schedules. And so I'm talking to the trainers about the possibility of waiting until September to, to get that going. But still, I think it's something that, that we could complete within a month's time.
So Sharon, this is, this is not technical training, this is customer relation type training?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the cost estimate for that is $15,000. Of course, it will also be staff time, and our customers are going to have to understand that while the staff is away at training, there may be some service delays. We would not close down the counter for this. We would divide the staff up into two or three groups, so there'd always be coverage. But still, people are going to be taken away from their usual duties for this. The next thing that we would like to do, and this was one of the recommendations from the Hoagland Ireland study a couple years ago, and that is to review applications for completeness before we take them in over the counter and start the clock running on whether we're meeting our target date for review or not. That, this is something that I think that we have talked about before to the city manager and the city council, along with the next recommendation I'll have. And, and we think that it, it puts the staff at a disadvantage to have applications come in that are very incomplete. And it's also not helping the applicants either, because they, especially the property owner, is thinking that their application should be moving along, and they find out three or four weeks later that, in a couple of examples in the projects I reviewed recently, we had two single-family homes where the plans didn't give us enough information that the planner could even check to see that the height complied with the zoning. And so the, the first round of corrections was, "Give me the information I need." So if we can have somebody check for this upfront before we even get the process started, we think it will help all of us. Now, I don't think that the person can, can catch everything because it's going to take a technical reviewer to see some of these things, but at least we'll know that all of the basic pieces of information we need have been submitted. So I would see this starting out with getting the agreement of members of the development community on what the submittal requirements should be so that we don't have arguments later on. We then would need to train the staff and, and to make this sustainable over the long term, along with the next recommendation we'll have, I think that we will need to add another permanent technician in the building department. That's the level of staff that I think can do this for us with the proper training. And so we should be able to get it started in July and then, then build up with the additional staff person later if that's approved. So the cost to this would be, with staff time, some minor service delays while people are, are training. And it's going to take more time for the applicant when they're at the counter, while that permit technician checks their submittal to make sure that everything is there. And it may involve an extra trip to City Hall for someone who comes with an incomplete package. And until people get used to this idea, we may have some less-than-happy customers. But I think that we need to stick with it because over the long run, I think that it will help everyone involved.
Sharon, if I could just add a few comments about that. I was involved in a discussion yesterday with the benchmarking consultants, and we were discussing, you know, this very thing. It, it isn't only training a, a few people to do that preliminary check to see if the application is complete, but it's really training the, the building community too. Because some people, you know, some people take advantage of the situation and know the plans are incomplete, and that's built into their process, and it's built into, you know, when they'll take on a new job and when they really expect to deliver a new job. So I think it's really key to make sure that the building community understands what we're talking about. But it isn't without, you know, some peril and some opportunity for, for controversy also, and that is getting into arguments as to whether the, the submittal was, was full or not. So there is that kind of opportunity. But I think, you know, initially, once we get into it, there are going to be some issues raised, but I think we really need to go there. Because where we want to go is that from the time we get a complete application, how long does it take for us to turn it around, the first, second, and third time? We've heard that that's what you're interested in, so we really need to start the clock and not let some of these sit in three or four weeks before we find out that they're incomplete, and the clock is already started. So it is going to require an adjustment on the part of some of the architects, but we think that, that is only right because it's kind of dragging down the system.
Appreciate your recognition that there's some issues and emphasis on the customer service. That's great. In terms of sort of some strategies on the front end, that makes a lot of sense. Now, what about as we get into kind of rounds two and three, where the applicants are saying, you know, new corrections from the city? Any strategies in how we might address that issue?
Well, I'll talk about that a couple slides down, and that's one of the things that we're trying to, to look at as we're working on, on the benchmarking things, but-
Okay. Can I ask you one more question to our process? In Newport Beach, we issue, I don't know if we still do this, separate permits, electrical, plumbing, roofing, heating, so on. Other communities just issue one permit, for example, Laguna Beach. Do you know what the background is on that, and if it would provide any efficiencies if we were to sort of go to a one permit kind of a system?
Jay's going to know that one better than I.
Mayor Souch, members of council, we have begun issuing combination permit for about two years now. And it's optional to, to the builders. It saves them the issuance fee. Some builders and contractors do not want to take responsibility for certain aspects of work that they're not doing, so they'd rather do only the building permit and leave the plumbing to their plumbing subcontractor. But we are issuing combination permits.
The next recommendation, and this is one we've made before, and I'm feeling more strongly about it, especially having seen how well it works in other communities, and that's to establish a receptionist function at the front counter to help guide applicants through the permit process. We want to make sure that people are sent to the correct staff, they're waiting in the correct line and being efficient with their time, they're being given complete information, they're told every step of the process that they need to go through so they can visit with the staff members in every department. And just to make it look more professional than it is now, I don't know how many of you have been to that counter and walked by when one of our staff members looks at the next, next name on the list and just calls out some person's name. It, I just don't think it gives a very professional image for, for our office. And so I think we can correct that and make it more efficient for people going through the process. Again, I would see this as a role for a permit technician, and we would probably rotate it among the permit technicians. And this one, we cannot implement unless we have another position added to handle that. So we would need to establish some procedures for this, hire the additional staff person, and then implement it. There would be, again, some staff training time for the, the new people, and the cost per year for the new position would be approximately $90,000. And then we'd also have some construction costs for new And one of the questions I had when I was visiting another city that had a system like this is, well, what does that person do when there aren't customers coming through the door? Because we don't want somebody just sitting there. And there are monthly reports that need to be done all the time. They can be working on that. They may be able to help someone else with accepting an application and checking for its completeness. I think there's no lack of work to do for this position, even if there isn't a steady stream of customers that need to be helped. And this one, I think, is very important and gets to Councilmember Daigle's question. We want to improve our performance measurements and our reporting on the activities. And we have tried, as you know, to give you reports on the first round of, of plan check, and we're showing that we're pretty consistently meeting that goal of four weeks. But I was sensing that there was not satisfaction that that was answering the question you all had. And so we attempted in a recent city council newsletter to, at least for a sample of projects, dig deeper into how long it took, how long the project was with city staff, how long with the applicant, and what were the reasons for the, the corrections and the additional rechecks. But what we really need to do is find a way to automate that information, and it's, and it's been a real struggle. So that is going to take some programming time from our IT department and some staff time to train the staff to do the new things. And ongoing, it's going to be a little bit more of a burden because they have to remember to record all of these actions within the system. So my estimates of December and January for completing the programming and training the staff really are just estimates because at this point, we don't know what else is going to come out of the performance measure and benchmarking program that may be burdens on the IT staff. And I don't want to just assume that I will be first in line for their time and energy. We are also talking as part of our benchmarking and performance measures of looking at some other ways that we can get more information on the corrections and the rechecks for plans. So that's a challenging thing to get to the bottom of, but we're trying to look at some other ways to do it.
And if I may, but in, based upon what I heard yesterday from the meeting with our ICMA consultants, and they were saying there really aren't many cities in terms of the plan check or in terms of the CIP process and the implementation of the CIP process that, that you can really use, for example. So they use the term kind of cutting edge, that we would be on the cutting edge of coming up with benchmark- up with benchmarks and defining how this could be done. So it isn't like, they've had a lot of experience in doing this, so we are wrestling with it and trying to come up with something that really makes sense.
So the costs for this will be staff time from the IT staff as well as the departments involved in development review. I don't know whether we can manage all of this with the existing staff we have. I don't know when you cross the line, but depending on how much we end up doing as a result of the benchmarking process, it could get to be to the point where we're adding enough little steps for the staff to do that we would need more people to keep up with this as well as their usual work. But just for this measure alone, for tracking the timing on rechecks, I think that can be done with the existing staff. This is, I was going to say, a less glamorous one, but actually, some of it is aesthetic to remodel the planned storage area at the permit counter. And this is the mess that you see when you walk into the counter at the very rear, rolls and rolls of plans with different colored tags hanging down from them. And they are not plans that we need to have accessible all the time because most of these documents have already been scanned, yet the staff do use them and they need to climb on ladders to get at them. And so we have a safety concern as well as efficiency of using our limited space and the way it appears. So this we can take care of, we believe, by November. The off-site storage to move those plans would be $800 plus $75 monthly, and then we would need to rebuild some storage bins for $6,000. We're going to rent it somewhere. And Jay, have you, you've got the cost estimate?
If I may, just want to add that this is actually for the cabinets where the old permits, the historical data. And currently, the plans are sitting with makeshift bins built over the cabinets. It's with a private company, I believe Red Mountain was one of the companies we looked at. And they would actually deliver, they would archive and deliver anything we want, we would ask them to deliver it to us too if we need to. But they're really historical data that we already digitized, so we don't need to have hard copies anymore.
And our next one is to maintain our existing one-stop permit center here at this facility. We talked about expanding that concept a little bit further. The only department that we don't have right at the counter now is the fire department. And we finally decided that they are close enough that it's not worth the disruption to their operation to bring somebody just from one building to another. However, as we start designing the new city hall, we think it's really important to provide enough space at the counter for all of the staff that need to be there, including the fire department and a cashier, and sufficient space for our customers to wait and to do a little bit of work because sometimes people are revising their plans on site and we see them doing it on the bench outside in the breezeway here. And enough space for planned storage. And although I don't think we can accommodate it in this facility, we know that electronic plan review is coming, and so we need to plan for that as part of the new city hall. So both the timing and the cost of those would be included with the city hall work. And this is an idea that I honestly keep going back and forth on myself, to consider a new position of permitting manager who could provide full-time attention to this function, which I think would improve coordination interdepartmentally and with customers, to assist with complex projects, and allow the staff to focus on technical issues and allow the department directors and myself to focus on the other responsibilities that we have. But I think I end up saying, let's hold off on this for the time being and see what improvement we gain from the other things that I've talked about today. If we, if our process improves from these other things, I think that the existing staff, the department directors and myself, and for some projects, the economic development staff or facilitators, I think that we could handle the occasional issues that come up. But if we find that these things don't give us the improvement we're looking for, or the workload or the complexity of things just continues to increase, then I think it would be worthwhile to consider a position like this and give this service the attention that it needs. And at a manager level, I think the cost to this would be about $150,000 a year. And none of these things are included in the proposed budget before you, nor are they on the checklist. But the implications for next year's budget and what I'm recommending is that we add $15,000 to the checklist for the customer service training program, $90,000 for a new permit technician position. And then as we decide what changes we need for the facility to just consider small budget amendments for workstation changes.
In terms of the new permit technician, what are their duties? Are they looking, are they checking off items for building and planning and public works? I mean, what's, I guess, what's the checklist going to look like? And, you know, what are some of the credentials of the person that would have that position?
It's the same level of position we have now that works at the counter and does the permit issuance and the taking in of the plans and the returning when people come to pick them up for corrections. So we do hire people who have experience working in building departments. The new duties that are added that cause the need for the new position are the receptionist function to help the customers get to the right staff people and understand what the process is, and then also to check submittals as they are coming in to make sure they're complete before we start the process. We already have checklists of submittal requirements. Those have been developed. I think that we need to review them with members of the development community first to make sure that both sides agree on these are the things that are needed. I think the permit technicians now, because they're in the building department, understand what's needed for that department. We'd need to give them a little bit more training so they understand what's needed for the planning department and the public works department.
Councilmember Curry?
Sharon, at our next meeting or soon thereafter, we'll consider some significant increases in our building and planning fees. And one of the things I want to insist on is that those fee increases are tied to service improvements. And I think you've got a good outline here of things that could be funded with those revenues, and clearly, they will be sufficient to fund what you've outlined here. So I'd like to see as that report comes back to the council that they be linked to some specific programmatic improvements as outlined here and as may otherwise be provided to enhance the service through the building and planning process. I think as you've outlined these positions, I'd like you to think about considering one of them to be more titled as an ombudsman to put the focus on customer service and on problem mitigation and on moving and facilitating the applications through the process. I think either one of those positions can be focused in that direction. I think the benchmarking is absolutely important because if we're going to make these investments, we want to measure how well we're doing in actually improving service, both in terms of customer satisfaction and in terms of the time it takes to process applications. And of course, the quality of the applications that we're processing needs to be considered as well. And finally, I'd like to see if we can't incorporate a more robust online tracking system in all of this so people from their homes or offices can log on and see where their application is and don't have a sense that they're lost in the bureaucracy some places or moving through this.
Thank you for mentioning that last one because when I talked about the improved performance measurements, that is, one of the goals is to be able to get that online. I have seen where other cities do it. It's with a program by the same company as ours, but not exactly the same program. So we're going to have to work with IT to see if we can customize permits plus to get us there.
Okay. Any other questions, Sharon? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of city council, we're going to now get to the planning department budget today's session. Quick overview here are the five core services that the planning department provides, administration, development services, code compliance, strategic planning, and economic development. You're probably most familiar with development services, handling, dealing with planning commission, entitlement applications, and certainly code compliance because the public information account is one of the most important functions that the planning department manages, and that's where we meet most of the residents and developers in this community. Planning department expenditures compare 2007, 2008 fiscal year with the proposed budget. You see the total at the midsection there, the reduction by about $1,300,000 from last year. And that largely reflects the fact that the local coastal program update and amendments, as well as the zoning ordinance update, printing costs for the general plan update to the new housing fees, were all budgeted in previous fiscal years. So that's where now you're seeing the big reduction in our operational expenses. Down below, again, we have same budget numbers divided or distributed by division under the planning department.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
And apparently, the budget amounts for those items went to zero. So you really think we're fully funded for the needs? Because that's the biggest issue there in your whole budget is the elimination of those...
Yes, you know, it's a good question. And what's happened is because we've tried to step up as far as, for example, some of the technical expertise consultants we need for the local coastal program update. If you recall, the last time, city council approved contracts for geotechnical assistance and for planning, environmental consulting, because now we're moving ahead, starting this fiscal year rather than wait till next fiscal year. So we do still have $75,000 in the next fiscal year budget for the LCP, but we're fully ramped up now and going ahead, so the funds have already been put into this year's budget. Again, some of the highlights, and the reason we put this up here and falling particularly on the heels of Ms. Wood's presentation, some of the items that we just talked about where we've budgeted in previous years for programs that we're still implementing in current and future budget years. You don't see some of the other things on here, department administration and staffing, and we'll get into some of our public counter work, that these were now carrying on as some of the council priorities, general plan implementation. We just highlighted a few here, we're not going to go through all these. Application of interim design ordinance, that was a big thing, if you remember, January of 2007, when council discussed, okay, now what ordinances do we put into place to affect these policies in the general plan? And it had to do with designing buildings to fit the contours of the topography and, you know, making certain that the building facades were consistent with the design in the neighborhood. And I know there was some concern at the time, but I did want to let you know that, you know, those are ongoing programs and we've done a pretty good job, we think, of implementing council's direction on those. And that is ongoing, that you don't see in the budget, we don't talk about, but that is something new and it's been pretty well-integrated over the past year. One of the important functions of the general plan, or department administration functioning. Same with the canyon and bluff policies in the local coastal program. Big difference, a lot of different and new provisions, standards that until the coastal land use plan was adopted, we didn't have to worry about. But we have now, we think, smoothly integrated those processes into our departmental functions. So some of that you don't hear about, don't see about, but we're very proud of that, so we wanted to call it to your attention here. Code compliance, another one of our core services. This is also very important, particularly, I mean, Ms. Wood indicated that there are some areas for improvements in customer service. We've rung all the benefit out we can. Certainly, we've done that with our planning, I have to think of Dan Campagni, he's no title, planning systems administrator. He's done excellent job of bringing, if you remember back two years ago, planning department wasn't even using permits plus as far as tracking and forget about online, you know, customers being able to go on there. Those are a lot of the improvements that through Dan's work, we've brought this department into at least approaching the 21st century. Now, some of the areas where we can continue to achieve benefits, if you recall previous budget year, what you're seeing in this, the current budget year and future budget year, were four new staff positions that allowed us to speed up the plan checking. Well, those positions were the most junior positions. Almost 20% of our staff has a one-year experience or less, and they are providing the work at the front counter. You know, that's by tradition, but we've changed that though because we realized that's the first exposure some customer coming in has with the city. So over the past year, we've supplemented that by rotating the associate and senior planners doing service at the front counter, where that didn't used to happen for a couple of reasons. There's always somebody with more expertise available for the customer, so we get consistent and informed opinions. They can also provide a training program on the job for, you know, those four new staff members with a year or less of experience. So to build on that, to get more benefit, we've now added senior planners to the counter program. What happens is every day, hour of every day that the planning counter's operating, the people, the associates or the assistant planners and planning technicians know who to call if a question comes up, there's a customer that they're having a problem with, they can call that person, there's a senior planner there within a minute to follow up as needed. And we think that's really important because that's the kind of ongoing improvement. Takes a little bit more time, it's not a quick fix, but that's built into this budget. We wanted to let you know that that's something we think is very important. Mostly important is if we don't put our senior staffers at the front counter, it doesn't send the message that that is a very, very important function, take care of our customers. So we wanted to point that out to you. Again, and Ms. Wood alluded to this, you know, our original plan check target was eight weeks, and fortunately, now that we do have the four additional staffers, we've gone from a plan check that was taking 12 weeks to last week, an average of 18 days per plan check. One of the additional benefits of having senior planners at the front counter from time to time, they are now doing triage as plan checks come in. And Ms. Wood gave the example of, you know, the plan check for a couple of residential units that sat there and nobody realized, oh, you didn't have enough information to measure height. Well, now, we've got experienced eyes going through those plan intakes on a daily basis and able to identify because of their experience, very quickly, a plan that's got a problem. So it goes back within two days to the applicant rather than sitting for a week before somebody gets to it for a full plan check. So we thought that was important to bring to your attention. And lastly, strategic planning, we continue, the housing element update is mostly completed and that should be going in. It'll be coming before the planning commission and council before the end of the month so we can meet the July 1st deadline, submittal to the state. Local coastal program, well, that goes on, we're hoping, I guess, for an August hearing on our first round of amendments to the coastal land use plan. And then over the course of the next budget year, we're going to be continuing with those other amendments to the implementation plan for the coastal land use plan. Again, differences, as you see in the right, this year, we have taken care of everything and consistent with our, my response to Councilmember Han, it's going to be required except for $75,000 for additional work on the local coastal program. And we're continuing our three-year document scanning program. This year, we budgeted $50,000, last year was only $60,000. And I think this is where Ms. Wood is going to come back and talk about the economic development component in the planning department.
When the city council adopted the strategic plan for fiscal and economic stability last year, we presented you with what we thought it would take to implement that plan over the course of two years. And we said that we could do it with our existing staff resources, but we needed some additional money in the budget to hire consultants and do some of the other things. So a budget amendment was done early in this fiscal year, and we had proposed the funding for the second year to be in the '08-'09 budget, and that was not included, that supplemental request. So you can see here what we have had in this fiscal year, and I have asked for, I believe it's on the checklist now, $50,000, just so we can do a few things, continue implementation of that plan. And I think the most important one is the first one, the $8,400 for CoStar subscription. That's our real estate information service, and we've had that for several months now, and it's really proved invaluable because not only can we tell a prospective business what we know about what sites may be available and how they're zoned, but there's profiles of information about each of the properties, about how many people live within a certain distance, what are the demographics of people who live within that distance, what are the disposable incomes of people in that area. So we think that that's going to be a helpful tool for us. We also, I'm showing $5,000 to update the website. I've been wanting to do this for years, it is so out of date, it doesn't present a good image for the city of Newport Beach, and it's time to deal with that. $1,000 to update the fiscal impact model. And then the remaining $35,600, I had thought that we might use to start implementing recommendations from the marketing study and the parking management study, both of which we have just started. the parking management study, both of which we have just started with consultants that the council recently approved. And I think at one of the earlier study sessions, there was a question about what are the unfunded parts of that strategic plan? So even with the $50,000 on the checklist, if that's approved, these are the things that we will not be able to do, so it would extend the implementation period for the plan. And those include updating a vision plan for the Balboa Peninsula, doing a master plan for the West Newport Mesa area, tracking retail trends with better sales tax information, and doing a feasibility study for small-scale lodging.
Sharon, Dennis, I would like to put on the checklist that Balboa Peninsula Plan Update.
Any other questions for me?
Okay, any other questions, Sharon, comments? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Souch, members of council, this is the building department budget overview. The, this is our organization chart, and I'd like to say that I envy Chief Klein, who two weeks ago mentioned they have four vacancies out of 241 employees. I have seven vacancies out of 33 full-time employees. Those are the position you see here in purple. We're fortunate enough to finally select, and a plan check engineer agreed to start with us, hopefully July 14th. We started a permit tech to replace this part-time counter permit tech last week, and we have one building inspector who, again, will start with us on June 14th, so that will reduce the impact. But these vacancies really affected not only our operation, but our service. This is the codes we enforce, multitude of codes, and the majority of them are state mandated codes. This is our building department allocation plan, and this is our proposed budget here. We again have 33 full-time employees and 1.16 or four part-time employees. There is no significant changes in our proposed budget, other than the positions that the council approved on December 11th, and also the lease, the cost of the new office lease and equipment and info, et cetera, of the new office that we took possession two weeks This is a breakdown of the staffing for plan check and permits. Again, we have four vacant positions here, inspection, we have three, and one contract staff in here. For the permit tech, we had one contract staff. Administration, we have full, five full-time employees.
Jay?
Yes, sir.
Are you finding it, with the downturn now in the economy and the building industry, that there are more applicants for these positions? I know there's a lot of demand in the private sector for these same positions we were trying to hire for, you know, professionals in the building industry. Is that getting any better?
We have a large number of applicants because of the downturn, the economy downturn, and also the new NeoGov system that many human resources use, departments and cities where you can put your application in NeoGov, and you store it, and whenever there's an opening come up, you get notified and you click okay, and you apply again. Not many of those were qualified individuals, a lot of them were through the mortgage industry or basically worked for contractors. They do not have specific building department or regulatory experience. We've had 400 applicants for the building inspector position, and we narrowed the pool easily to down to 10, and we were able to pick two, and the third one, I don't think we're going to be able to pick him up, because we're not going to fill that position. So again, qualified applicants is the issue. This is our revenue, our estimated revenue for next year in line with last year. We always are conservative in our estimate, and of course, if the new fee resolution is approved and the new fee structure that will significantly change our revenue, because it's valuation-based, and we are, our valuation is very low for construction in the city. We have not adjusted it for the last couple of years. This is the building department revenue. We're projecting 4.8 million, again, in line with last year. This is our construction valuation annually, and again, we are projecting to be at 265 million this year. This is based on $113 a square foot for a single-family dwelling. And we took a survey of contractors and builders, and the survey resulted in about $250 to $600 a square foot. This is some of the significant project we accomplished, again, based on our lower valuation. So you can see they're quite significant, number of millions of dollars. This is the number of projects value, by valuation, and the reason I added this chart is to show that really, this is the number of projects that we'd like to see higher up, where we can collect larger revenue. The amount of work involved in some of these large projects, it does compare sometimes in terms of the personal attention to the smaller projects, because you still have to take the plans in, and you have to interact with the customer. And sometimes, when you have a smaller project, you deal with homers directly that would require a lot of facilitation and assistance. So we've done 1,708 projects between $0 to $50,000 in the last fiscal year. This is our service indicators, and again, in response to council member or mayor Pro Temdego, as you can see, the asterisk here says that combination permits issued in lieu of subpermits effective November 2006. So really, the number of permits is artificially lower, but really, it is not, because when you issue combination permits, you don't issue the individual subpermits. This is our permit data, and it shows again that we are heavily involved in residential. 121 new residential permits still, we have not slowed down. We do a good about 10 a month of new single-family dwellings, and equally, we do the same number of demos. Residential addition, about 1,000 units, commercial addition is 275, miscellaneous is 1931, and new commercial is 15. But again, obviously, significance is $75 million worth of valuation is new residential construction. This is the turnaround time for the first plan check, and this is for the building department only. Basically, 1,544 plans were checked the first time, less than 10 days, 252 between 11 to 20 days, and so forth here, and 96% of the first plan checks were done in less than four weeks. This is a project custody, similar to what I've done last year and similar to Ms. Wood's report, and these are 10 projects of different nature and type, and it can show that for the Cardinal color is the customer custody versus city custody or building department custody in here. For a large commercial project, for example, the city had it for 89 days. For this particular project, which was incidentally the Atrium Court, which was a $20 million project, 92,000 square foot or so, and the customer had it for 118 days. And it goes on, again, it shows, in this case, this duplex, the city had it for 84 days, the customer had it for 253 days. And again, the reason the customer could have it, basically because they may require modification or discretionary approvals. But nevertheless, this is just straight out of our permit data. This chart shows the number of days each time, and it does show the concern that came out of the survey, the number of rechecks. There is a significant number of rechecks, and we are trying to take steps to reduce that, and I'll get into it shortly. This is the modification, alternate methods and materials processes, which is similar to the planning modification, is when someone choose to modify certain provisions of the code or use an alternative method or material or a design. So we received 163 application, we took an average 7.28 days to process, and the approval percentages is 95%, at a rate of about four applications a week. Plan check enhancements, again, and I feel that sometimes in our own humble way, we can do certain things to help enhancing the plan check service to our customers. So as a result of the survey, and I wasn't privy to the raw data, basically looking at the information, we decided that we have to meet the target dates for the first plan check and try to reach 100% goal. And this way, we'll encourage more time management on behalf of the plan check engineers and write efficient correction and focus on the more important stuff, because I believe if you give more time, you can sometimes write more corrections that may not be as germane or critical to the project. As far as the number of plan check cycles, we try to, first of all, encourage that after the third check, that a meeting be held with the customer. And the reason we choose the third check, because we do not have a process where we screen incomplete applications. So if you have an application that's coming in, and there is an incomplete submittal, you require more information, you need the opportunity to review those and write corrections on them. So you have the first check, the second check, you get the incomplete information, you write correction on them. The third check will be the absolute time where everything has to be complied with and resolved. If not, we would encourage meetings with the design team and even involve the applicant until the resolution of the corrections is done face-to-face. We began implementing both of those two processes March 15th, and hopefully, we get to see an improvement. And I know in terms of the target dates, we've been, we've been seeing a great improvement in the first target date.
Jay, with regards to that meeting, does that involve management personnel, or who does that meeting involve?
Well, initially, we would, the engineer who's doing the plan review, we would, he would write a note that the corrections are not resolved, and contact the design team. If that, we're trying to go through a transition period with that. If that's not resolved the first time, we will involve the building owner and management staff.
Okay. So you're aware of these sort of third-round meetings that are taking place, then?
Yes. Yeah. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions, Jay?
Jay, could I, oh, excuse me.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, Jay, the salary and benefits for your department is up 13.3%, although your FTEs aren't up. I'm assuming that that's the roll-through of the filling of these open positions?
Um, are we?
I'm just looking at the material in the, in the rap that was given us.
I think it's the new position, filling the new positions and the positions that council approved December 11th.
Yes. But then, the maintenance and operations budget is up quite a bit, over $150,000, and I couldn't find the support for that in the budget detail, Dennis.
The, the reason that amount went up, first of all, because of the workload for overflow plan check, and second, the contract positions that we are using. We use a contract building inspector and contract permit tech, and that's charged to that account.
Okay. All right.
Jay, while we're talking about the contract plan check in particular, we had a discussion, I think it was in the staff meeting a couple of weeks ago, about our building fees, and I know we're going to get ready to address them, but I think it'd be interesting to let council know, and they need to know, in terms of how our building fees are hurting us in terms of getting good outside plan check firms to work with us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blue Dow. This is an issue that's affecting our, the quality of the consultants we use. The consultants out there, of course, they don't do work for free, it has to pencil for them. And generally, our projects are more involved, they're infill projects that involve basements and seawall and grading and complex type of construction. So for consultants that'd rather deal with more of tract development or larger commercial centers, if you will, out in the desert or that are flat land with less complex issues. So for us, the only incentive for them is the fees that we charge, and when our valuation is low and our fees is low, we begun losing consultants. They wouldn't want to do work for us anymore, because they cannot assess the fees, which is a percentage of the fees we collect. So it has affected us a great deal.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Mark Harmon with the general services department, and then after that, we'll ask council if you want to continue. I think it has been my desire to conclude this by 5:15, so that there is plenty of time for your closed session tonight.
Thank you, Homer, mayor, council members, Mark Harmon, director, general services. And I would like to take just a second, read the mission statement, we did rewrite it this year. It kind of outlines our customers, to provide cost-effective service in order to maintain a clean and safe city infrastructure, to ensure a high quality of life for residents, and to provide for the enjoyment of our visitors, and to support all other city departments. We support other city departments when the other stuff's done, so that's time permitting. We'll work on that. Our core services, we outlined contract management, and you'll see a slide here in a couple of minutes, it shows the contracts. Maintain and repair, replace city vehicles, coordinate work with our public works department, operational logistical support, such as the 5K, some of those other projects. Roadway, sidewalk, curb gutter repair and replacement, cleaning, maintenance and repair of our facilities, parks and beaches, manage our urban forest, and of course, residential refuse and recycling collection. Breakdown by division, you'll see we have a total about a 2% increase. This is without the issue that you're going to be deciding on tonight. If council approves the contract tonight, that cost for '08-'09 will actually go down by $600,000, and we will have a budget that is less for next year by approximately $100,000. So conceivably, we could have a budget with the same service levels for about $100,000 less in costs for next year. Some of the significant expenditures for our divisions, equipment maintenance, you see our rolling equipment, that's our equipment replacement. Field maintenance, of course, that's our, field maintenance is our street, sidewalk, curb and gutter division. You'll see asphalt and concrete materials make up the biggest part of that division, second to salaries. Operations support, that's our beach maintenance, street sweeping, storm drain maintenance, and you'll see the main expenditures there, with contract services and janitorial services being very large for that division. Parks and street trees, by far the largest there is contract services, that's our park maintenance median, maintenance programs there right of way. And refuse, of course, salaries and the MRF contract. Again, that MRF contract cost is the cost it is this year. Again, that would go down considerably based on tonight's action.
Mark?
And salaries and service.
One question on your tree reforestation. Is that amount capable of providing 36-inch trees instead of 24-inch trees?
That's correct. In fact, we've started that using the larger trees already in our, in our operation. So next year, we'll be doing more of that, certainly the larger trees, and we're replacing several in a, in a block or several in a, in a certain area, so that we don't have the smaller stick trees. Contract administration, this was an important slide for us to put in. It seems sometimes that there's a perception that most of what we do in general services with in-house staff, with city crews, you can see about 38% dollar-wise of the department is actually contract services. Those, even though we've been very fortunate with a very competitive, solid waste workforce, now, the other contracts are certainly increasing significantly, and that applies to our landscape contracts. We had an increase in Newport Coast, we had a significant increase in the medians and road sides, and right now, we're out with our parks and facilities maintenance contract, and all indications are that will increase as well. The reason for those costs, we have, of course, new areas in service, we have the annexation areas, we have new medians such as Upon Superior, and their fuel and materials personnel costs are increasing as well. Just in fuel, general services, we saw about a 24% increase in unleaded fuel during the last year, and about a 54% in our diesel cost. And when you budget it about $380,000 for fuel, those kinds of numbers are significant increases in what we do. So fuel is definitely a concern, it doesn't show any signs of slowing down. Breakdown by employees, the big news in this slide is the reduction of three positions within the department. The office assistant position in administration, that's actually been vacant for a few years, vacant before I actually started here, but the two field maintenance positions were actual funded, filled positions this past year, so those are by all means true reductions in personnel costs. Both of those positions were involved in Both of those positions were involved in concrete and asphalt, our street maintenance and curb and gutter programs. They became vacant, one person decided to leave, one we made that decision for, and because of some of the contract work that we're doing with sidewalk grinding, we made the decision that we could reduce the workforce by these two employees. Again, not to keep bringing up the contract tonight, but if that is successful July first, we will actually reduce our full-time employees in the department by five positions. So that's a considerable reduction in the workforce for the general services crew, and that's something you see in most budgets is a reduction of people. So, you know, we're going to keep looking at ways to trim the budget.
Mark?
Sir?
You're to be commended with your control of your employee counts and whatnot, and for the full-time reduction. I did notice, though, that one and a half full-time equivalents got added back in terms of additional part-time. So where was that? Why was that? Is that to make up for some of that three reduction in full-time?
No, we had one half-time position for, and I'll touch on it in a minute, for our hazardous waste facility. I'm not sure, other than our summer help, I'm not sure what we would have increased. I know we were looking for more temporary summer help, because we have not had enough the past couple of years, those part-time positions, litter abatement and those things, but I'm not sure that we added one and a half back.
Well, I'm just going off the summary on the back of the resource allocation plan, Dennis, so maybe there is, somebody can have a look at that and get back to me on that too.
Mark, it might be that it isn't just, you know, three part-time people, that it may be a combination of ten part-time people, including the summer, that adds up to one point.
Right, we go by the hours, obviously, for the one and a half positions. During the summer, we try and look for as many as ten to twelve, I'll call them kids, for they're younger than me, so I guess they're kids, but to come in and work with our summer crew. We don't like to hire full-time people, obviously, to come in with the summer rush, so we use a lot of part-time people. And I know we've been looking to add more, but I'm not sure if that answered, if that's the answer to your question, I'll have to check. Okay. The benchmarks that we're working on with ICMA, refuse collection, park maintenance, street sweeping, beach and bay maintenance, these were the highest profile, I guess you could say, issues from the customer satisfaction survey. We're very proud of that survey, actually, a lot of the services that we provide scored extremely well, as you can see here with our refuse collection operation being the top of those. So we'll work with ICMA benchmark those. The challenge right now is determining how to benchmark those, and we met, staff met with the ICMA people yesterday for a couple hours to discuss just that question, how do you compare refuse collection in the alleys of the peninsula and the island with refuse collection in cities that don't have those challenges? So, you know, we're certainly trying to get that figured out as we move forward. Targets and challenges for next year, construct a CNG station at the Corporation Yard, that will be coming in front of the council at your next meeting, on the twenty-fourth. Are very excited about that, I think we have a good contract ready to go with help from the Finance Committee. Approve a contract for the purchase of CNG refuse equipment and street sweepers. I've been before this council before to talk about the age of our equipment and the need for the replacement. So as soon as we get the station on board, we'll be back to council to take a look at replacing that, that equipment. Hustled hazardous waste, ABOB and E-Waste Collection Facility, again, ABOB, antifreeze, battery, oil and paint, for Councilmember Gardner's answer to her question, you're about task. And E-Waste Collection Facility, we've had one E-Waste Roundup in the City Yard, and I think you all heard the news on that. It was the largest E-Waste Roundup that Goodwill's ever put on, or I think second largest they've ever had in their history of doing the event, so by all measures, it was extremely successful, and demonstrates the need for that collection center full-time, so we'll have that in our City Yard. And then, of course, continue the service cost review. We're gonna, you know, we've looked at overtime in the past year, we're going to continue to do that. As a group, we'll continue to look for ways to trim the budget in places we can save cost, but just as important, continue the service that we've provided in years past. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, I have one more question, and this probably is for Dennis as well, as anyone as well, so when you come back to me on that part-time issue, could you also, there's apparently a big bubble on the internal service funds in two thousand and seven and eight that went away in the oh eight, oh nine budget. I'd like to understand why we had such a bubble in those internal service funds in oh six or oh seven, oh eight. Looks like about a million and a half dollars.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to push forward, I think we can finish up with public works today, we should be able to do that one in fifteen minutes.
So well-engineered machines, so I'm sure we can do it.
That's right. That's our new slogan, and we're working towards that. Thanks for the reorganization of last year, we're, our machine is getting better and better every day with all the new employees and the fortunate hiring of our deputy city engineer, our deputy fellow works director and city engineer, Dave Webb. We're just getting better and better. And we also simplified our mission statement, because a wise consultant told us to keep it simple, and so we're protecting and providing quality public improvements and services. Our organization's remained basically the same, of course, with the reorganization, we kept the same number of employees, so there really isn't any change, and we're organizing the, essentially, the CIP delivery and our transportation development services as well as an administrative arm. And a quick overview here, one of the things that you will, will jump out at you is the changes in the salary and benefits and the maintenance and operations. Essentially, the differences there are the fact that we had to transfer salary savings into our maintenance and operations budget in order to shore up and get some temporary help in that past year. As you were aware, we were, had several vacancies, and yet still had to deliver the CIP, so we were fortunate, and I think we did a pretty good job keeping things moving forward, so those numbers are a little juggled. But in the bottom line, though, is you'll see that there's a four point five, seven percent change, which is essentially the difference in salary and benefits. Of course, we have a lot of successes here, in addition to the successful reorganization, we have a lot of projects done, and there's a whole list there, and there's another whole list there. We're pretty proud of that, we've delivered a lot of projects. As you can see, by just by every agenda, we either have a completion, several completions or several awards of new projects, so that effort will continue. Our primary goals for this year are essentially balanced around the council priorities, the traffic planning and traffic management, certainly a big one on our agenda, the capital project delivery as well. This year, we're also looking at improving our strategic planning and reporting. As you know, we're going to come up with a web-based project schedule program, and we'll hope to be able to roll that out later this summer. We want to get more information out there. We feel that the department does a lot of good work, but it's just, the word doesn't get out there, and the council deserves to get more credit for all the things that you let us take care of, and all the things that do get accomplished, and we're going to be working really hard on, on trying to get that information out and about. We're also going to be looking at our environmental programming development. As Mayor Protem Deagle mentioned, we're going to be doing a study session in the future and talk about rolling out and getting, keeping those environmental projects going forward. We're also looking at creative project management solutions. We're using a lot of contracting out, in fact, tonight, you'll, there's an agenda item where we are going to be hiring a project manager on an on-call basis. The next agenda, we will have another small firm also in that situation. We're finding that we can, if we have the flexibility of delivering projects to changing, changing up the management of those projects, we can deliver things faster and quicker and make adjustments faster. One of the things that Homer and I talked about a little earlier today, though, one of the concerns we understand is that there are a lot of thoughts about, well, you know, what is Public Works really doing with all of these projects, and how are they going to be parceled out, and how is council going to be aware? One of the things that you will see in our council reports when we approve PSA for consultant contract for design, or we award a construction project, you'll see in there a discussion about how the project is being managed, whether it's going to be an in-house personnel or a contract manager. You're going to see some different names that aren't city employees on some of these reports, and you have in the past. We have Mark Reader from Gable Engineering, we also have Emmett Berkery, that does a lot of work for us, and we're going to continue the use of Gail Picard, who's also done a wonderful job for us. He was the main driver behind the Back Bay Science Center.
Steve, question for you, I saw that in item eleven, that the, the on-call PSA, and apparently this project manager's working on City Hall, six other projects, is highly functional, so I can appreciate, you know, the idea of, you know, funneling more work there, you know, all for getting the job done. As we increase reliance, though, on outside consultants, you know, how do you sort of see your budget going in terms of in-house resources if there's less reliance?
Well, I think what, using the, I think we're pretty solid on the in-house, I mean, we have still to manage some of those outside consultants. We do really like the idea of using the outside consultants, because if there is a low in work, we can cut back, and it's relatively painless and it's immediate. If the projects tail off and there's less to do, we can, we can roll back the amount of outside consultants that we're using. So it really does provide us a lot of flexibility, and it will hopefully keep our M&amp;O budget fairly stable in the future, and as we have that ability to add and subtract projects, we can fund them through the projects. In fact, a lot of the, the work that the outside consultant project managers are going to be doing, we will actually be charging their time to the capital project. So it'll be, you know, it won't affect the M&amp;O side at all and keep a fairly stable ongoing costs.
Thank you.
Steve, are there some particular type of projects, though, that you want to keep in-house in terms of managing?
Yeah, oh, I think a lot of our, that's actually a great, great question, Homer. The, there are a lot of things that we do that are, you know, I guess we consider almost automatic, they're very easy to do, they're very easy to get out. Projects like slurry seals or small, or very common overlay projects are more efficiently done in-house. Whenever we see a project that it takes longer to explain to a consultant how to do it than just doing it, so we certainly want to, you know, there are certain levels of projects we want to keep in-house. And plus, we have a lot of, you know, in-house knowledge of certain issues. You know, every neighbor has its own little nuances, there's little issues here, there's a drainage issue there, or some kind of a, of a local issue, an access issue, whether it's a school or whatever. A lot of, there's a lot of local knowledge that we're building, that knowledge base in our group, and certainly want to keep those people involved in those kinds of projects that are very, I guess, sensitive to the community, so there is a hands-on, and we're always aware of what's going on, and we certainly want to, you know, keep that, build that in-house knowledge base. Just to finish up here real quick, we're also working on, we're ongoing training and customer service and response in this, where those are going to be key focuses for us. As I mentioned, we want to be able to get the word out about what's going on in Public Works. We've already started a lot of, a new way of doing business with our outside agencies like Caltrans, and I think, as evidenced by the most recent work that they've done on Newport Boulevard, things seem to have gone a little bit smoother, and we're going to continue those relationships with not only the Caltrans, but the Orange County Sanitation District as well, and other agencies that do work in our town, including RWD, so that we have a little more, better communication, and not only with those agencies, but with the public at large. And that's pretty much all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Steve? Mayor Protem Deagle?
Yes, one of the things I was looking at budgets, I didn't see anything on surveying, and I know that over time, a lot of our centerline monumentation was eliminated by, you know, ongoing roadwork. And so it seems as if, at least what I learned, and I don't know the full picture, so feel free to correct me, is that it's being replaced on a piecemeal basis as property owners come in to improve their property, and that seems to be creating some issues. The first is it's being replaced in a patchwork way, so maybe it doesn't have the uniformity, the consistency that we're looking for. Secondly, some of the property owners are saying, you know, this is an exaction on us when, you know, it was the city's contractor that wiped out these monuments. And then also, I understand it's led to some heated exchanges at the public counter. So I was wondering if we could perhaps consider that there might be a different way to sort of go about solving the problem of replacing this, these, this centerline monumentation?
Yeah, you raise a really good issue, and we have actually started addressing that issue. In fact, with the creation of the city surveyor position about, I guess, a year and a half ago, we've been including in every capital project, paving project, to make sure that we add in that monumentation that was lost for whatever reasons. You know, it might have been a capital project, it might have been some emergency repairs, or it could have been just about for whatever reason. There are certain sections of town that are kind of devoid of some good control. We're working with those folks that are doing private projects as best we can to try to maybe, you know, take some of the burden on some of the, you know, the monumentation efforts. I think lately, we haven't had too many real issues with that, and certainly we'll work with anybody that has, you know, certainly running, you know, control in from miles away to do a project is not an efficient way for them, and you're right, it is a burden that we probably shouldn't be placing on them. So we're happy to work with anybody that has one of those issues.
Okay, so for example, in Shore Cliffs, how are we addressing it there?
I'm not aware of anything that's going on there, we can certainly look into it. If there is a particular problem, we can, we can pull some of that out. I know we did do a paving project a little whiles back, and I think we did do some monumentation, but we not, might have done, you know, there's always a difference of opinion on the how, you know, how much is good enough, but we'll certainly look into any issue that you might want to raise to us.
Okay. Any other questions, Steve? Thank you, Steve. Okay, and I guess we have utilities and library to go, and we'll do those at the next study session? In parks, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I noticed that we've had several people from the Restaurant Association in the audience. Was there an expectation that they were going to make some sort of a presentation or be needed today?
I was thinking it was going to be later this evening, not right now, I mean, we're going to open it up for public comments right now, which I will do. Public comments, anyone want to address the council on anything not on our study session agenda?
Since most everybody just snuck out because we didn't think we were going to make the agenda, I'm a little, little bit unprepared, however. I guess, basically, we're hoping that you consider a proposal for our new budget. We're trying to accomplish a lot of things this year with the Restaurant Association here in Newport Beach. We would like to do a second restaurant week, especially since the ones that we've had have been really successful, they're getting more successful every time, we're getting a lot more revenue reports that are saying that it's working for you as well as the, on the tax revenue basis. Kind of unprepared, I didn't expect to come up here right now, but does anybody have any questions I can maybe answer?
Okay. Were you guys going to come up later on during the budget hearing also?
Absolutely, yes. We were told to be here at four, so that's why we were here, so we didn't know.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions right now?
But we lost a few members at the moment who had to go run their restaurants.
Councilman Webb?
I have some questions that I was planning on raising as a part of the BID discussion this evening, and I really think it'd be better at that time rather than now.
Well, I know Lee DeSantis was planning on talking to you about that the next session, so.
Okay. Okay, we'll just come back this evening.
See you guys later.
Okay, and can you give your name for the record, please?
Oh, I apologize, Sherry Drury with Wilma's Patio Restaurant and President of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to address the council on public comments? Okay, seeing no one, we'll adjourn to a closed session. Okay, seeing no one, we'll adjourn to a closed session.